Okay, and now being 2 o'clock, I will call the April 14th, 2025 Board of Selectmen Meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded for cablecast and YouTube presentation by Area 58 Community Access Media. The video of this meeting is not to be considered an official public record. The approved minutes of the meeting will serve as the official record of the proceedings. Our first agenda is a public hearing on the Comcast Cable Television License Renewal, which I'll turn it over to Selectman Russo.
Thank you, John. So this is a public hearing on the Comcast Cable Television Franchise Renewal. We have up on the distance screen Bill August, Town Council on this project.
Rich Goulart has logged in, too.
And I hope Bill can hear us. Rich Goulart, who is the Executive Director of Area 58 Cable, is also on. So what's going to happen is we'll start with a fairly long preamble that I'll read. There'll then be the opportunity for discussion on the merits or any concerns about the franchise renewal. We'll then close that part of the hearing. The Selectmen will have a chance to discuss further, and then there'll be a motion to approve the franchise renewal. So we start with a little bit of public reading. Or before I do that, just to confirm with Selectmen's Assistant and Town Administrator that proper hearing notice has been given.
Yes.
And they're both shaking their heads, yes. So good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Town of Plumbton's Public Hearing on Comcast Cable License Renewal. By way of background for the public, state law requires the holding of a Select Board Public Hearing prior to the final action on a proposed renewal license, which includes opportunity for public comment on town needs, cablecast cable service performance, and the proposed renewal license. Notice of this hearing was in the local newspaper for two successive weeks, and copies of the notice are entered into the hearing record as Hearing Exhibits 1 and 2. A copy of the proposed contract license as negotiated with the town is entered as Exhibit 3. Based on information and testimony before us and the record of prior public hearing, the Select Board, in this case, the Board of Selectmen, may take final action on and improve or reject the proposed Plumbton Comcast License Renewal. Comments from the public and other interested parties, if any, as well as questions to Comcast can be directed through me, and I will rule whether they are in order. Before getting started with accepting the public comments, I would like to recognize and thank the local programming provider, that is Area 58 Community Media, and Comcast for their hard work and collaboration through a productive license renewal process. Now we shall proceed to accept comments from the public, if any. Please keep your comments to no longer than four minutes. Just before that, I will also thank Bill August, who has done yeoman work in getting us through the process, and actually Rich Goulart, who's done yeoman service in directing Area 58. So at this point, we can take comments from the public, both from the public or from the Board of Selectmen, speaking in favor or, for that matter, speaking against the franchise renewal. So maybe I can start off just by saying this has been a long process. I was involved in the negotiation 10 years ago, and I think Mike Gallo from Comcast was also involved 10 years ago. We were just commenting on being a touch amazed that it's 10 years later, and here we are. Maybe we'd be doing good work 10 years from now as well. It's actually been a pleasure working with Comcast on the renewal. We ended up, I think, with a really good contract. It brings us in line with the other two towns that are part of Area 58. In particular, we're ending up with a proposed annual payment of 5% of the gross Comcast Avenue revenues, which is the same as the Town of Carver and the Town of Halifax, that money to be used for public TV. Equally, there were some choices on how we dealt with capital improvements, but we've ended up with a reasonable fixed annual payment, which is really what we wanted so there'd be some certainty on what to expect and plan along the way. So we ended up with that as well. This year's license renewal is 59 pages. If I'm remembering correctly, 10 years ago, it was 99 pages. So either we're getting more succinct, or possibly we're just using a smaller font along the way. So in any event, I am strongly in favor of this franchise renewal. This whole process of broadcasting and cable is probably rapidly evolving, and to some extent, I'm rather amazed that 10 years later, we're in similar situation. Whether we'll be in similar situation 10 years from now, not sure. For now, this feels like a really good contract. I think while I'm gabbing, I might just mention as an aside, the three towns that are part of Area 58. I think this is a good example of regionalization of services within town government. Sometimes that process works out very well. We've tried it in other departments and really couldn't get going and get much of anywhere. It's been absolutely great to have one combined cable television studio, and I think we've done very well by that, and it remains a model for other towns along the way. Having said all that, is there anyone else that'd like to speak to or against the renewal? And Bill August, I don't know if you can hear us. Any comments from out that way?
I don't think that they can hear, but I typed them a message, and they have not sent anything.
All right. I think if there are no other comments, we can go from the discussion part of this, and I can make a motion, and it'll be a chance for us to discuss further if need be. So this is a motion for the Plumbton Comcast License Renewal vote by Plumbton Board of Selectmen. Acting in its capacity as the Statutory Cable Television License Issuing Authority pursuant to Mass. General Law 166A, and finding that the cable license renewal proposal of Comcast reasonably meets the cable-related renewal needs and interests of the public and the town, and finding that Comcast financial and technical qualifications and Comcast local programming channels, facilities, and service are reasonable to meet town cable license needs, and based on the recommendation of the town's renewal negotiation team to approve the proposed Comcast License Renewal, the Board of Selectmen hereby approves and shall execute the proposed Plumbton Comcast Renewal License effective July 1, 2025. So that's the motion.
Second.
Any further discussion on the motion?
Not my call.
Then why don't we just, to be official, do a roll call vote? Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Traynor?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
We have a contract renewal.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill, even though you can't hear us.
I'll give him a call.
He will. See you in 10 years.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. We'll revert back to our regular agenda. The next agenda item is to ratify a vote of appointment of Robin Carter to the Board of Registros, April 1, 2025, to March 31, 2027. Second. Any discussion? I think it's great that Robbins...
Glad to have her.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The next one, agenda item, is an appointment of Patrick Reed, Police Officer/Academy Cadet, April 14, 2025, until dissolved. Second. All those, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Now going to go into a review and recommendations of town meeting articles and the FY26 Budget Proposal that will be presented to town meeting on May 14. My understanding, the Finance Committee will vote tonight. We're voting approval, but subject to the ability to go back if there's anything that they just do. Okay. So Liz, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Sure. Why don't we do the budget first, which I believe is Article 4 on the annual town meeting warrant? So I brought the budget up on the large screen here so that you can see it. I'll go like section by section, and then if you want further explanation on anything in particular, or if I think of anything in particular, I will call it out for you.
Great.
So the first section is insurance and pension. These were unfortunately costs that we just can't get away from. The county pension is a fixed number. They tell us what that's going to be, and as you can see, it went up substantially. Group health is up pretty significantly as well. So that's the insurance and pension section.
Did they give us any reasons for the pension going up so much?
Just increased liability and trying to get caught up. So this next section are some of the smaller items, departments, boards, committees, kind of general in nature. Board of Appeals is only going up $200, even though the percentage increase looks scary. They need that for advertising. I'm just going to call out if there's anything new or different. Council on Aging, the increase is largely due to the increased cost for mailing the COA newsletter and fuel for the van, but it's really the COA, the newsletter.
Right. How about Recreation?
Okay, so let's talk about Recreation. So last year, just as a reference point, their annual operating budget was $10,250.
Right.
They received another $10,000 via article, and then separate and aside from that, they had the CPC-funded project for all the work at Whole Field Outback. This year, Finance Committee does not want to continue with the article, so they asked them to put the cost for field maintenance into the operating budget. So we were anticipating a budget request somewhere in the range of about $20,000, give or take. Initially, earlier today, they had requested $48,736. I was able to reduce that by $4,000 because there were two items in there that are attachments for a tractor that is managed by the Highway Department. So I'll work with Rob and find a different, more appropriate funding source for that. I don't anticipate Finance Committee, just with everything going on, recommending that full amount, but that is the total of their request. Right now, as a placeholder, Finance has in their $20,000 recommended. We believe that they're also seeking more funding from CPC for additional work on the fields out back, so...
Which I believe has been approved or will be after town meeting.
Yes, exactly.
There is an article in here.
Yes, correct.
Yes. So that's the Recreation Budget Request as of right now.
So the end result's going to be a budget request and no article seeking additional funding?
Correct.
So it's really $8,000 that we're talking increase over what was there last year because you had the 20?
It's $24,000 more that they're looking for.
Now, I had a glance at their, what they submitted before I came in, but I didn't get a chance to really. Does it seem reasonable?
It seems like a very high cost for the field maintenance itself, like aerating, seeding. And I know that they've done a really good job of getting the fields up to a nice condition. So I think it's warranted, but I wonder if they could obtain better pricing, or we could work with the Highway Department and figure out what's manageable, what's not. But it seems like a lot of money going towards that, like just the maintenance of the fields. I mean, there's a little bit of a cost in there for the porta-potties. You know, I don't know how you can really get around that. I mean, you could try to get it down a little bit by saying, okay, when is this field used, and minimizing the number of months that it's out there, but that seems minimal. It's really the cost for the fields is about $9,000 that they're estimating, like per field, and there's three that they're doing. So that's a huge portion of it. And I understand from their point of view, they worked very hard, obviously, to build that committee back up and to do some really meaningful work with all the fields and getting things usable. They don't want to see that slip back. I think it's finding that right balance and who should be doing what.
I think it's great that we've got a very active Recreation Committee, and they have done really a good job out there. The fact that we have lights on the field still kind of amanor to go out and see it. But I do think the Finance Committee, if they decide that this is going to come down, we ought to come back and readdress that piece of it. So I feel comfortable if we can go ahead and vote it, subject to the Finance Committee's approval.
Right.
Is that okay? Yeah?
Okay.
Okay. The next section is for the Assessors Office. The percentage increase looks big under their expenses. That's only for, the $7,141 is for that GIS software. Last year, we were able to fund it with ARPA money. It's not just them who utilize it. There are multiple departments that take advantage of it, but it's just easier to have it all under one department, so that's why...
That's an annual cost, then?
The Town Clerk section went down because, obviously, we don't have the same number of elections this year. Accountant and Treasurer Collector, there's nothing really out of the ordinary here. Selectmen's stipend, I think that the $3 is far too much.
A lot of people agree with you.
I'm coming up on my 12th year on that. I haven't seen a penny.
You haven't got the dollar?
Not one penny.
You got $9 here.
Let me see if there's anything that stands out.
The only thing I see is the Facilities Management stipend.
So that's the, that was the $100 per week for Bridgette to do that. And we did have to increase Town Council, the $75,000. We were trying hard to stick to that, but we're not going to make it to the end of the year, so we upped that by 10K.
Okay. Very hard to figure that out.
It is. You can't always tell. Board of Health, everything is in order. Let's see. Highway Department, the reason for, under Administrative Assistant, the Finance Committee's number is a little bit less than the requested number. That's because their Administrative Assistant is working as a retiree, so typically she takes off like a couple weeks a year as vacation and just isn't paid for. It doesn't make up the hours. They had put in for the full amount, as if she was going to work all her hours per week for 52.2 weeks, but Finance had us deduct out...
She can only do the 18.
That amount, correct.
What about the Transfer Station staff?
So that, they're only getting the 2.5% COLA. They're not getting any increase beyond that. That is to account for, we realized that they weren't being compensated to turn things on and get it up and running and to shut things down at the end of the day. So that's to facilitate one person getting an extra 15 minutes at the start of the shift and the end of the shift, so that we're not cutting into hours that the transfer station is open for business, so...
But that means the station should be open and closed on those hours, not ahead of it.
Correct. This section is fairly self-explanatory. Building Inspector needed some additional in there because you've got both Tom Milias and Bill Kelly doing some of the stuff. They make up for it in the permit fees, so Finance isn't really concerned about that. So Fire Department, I didn't know if you wanted to look more in depth at that. The Chief was proposing adding four people to the union. They are the last four people showing on this document here. If I had to venture a guess, I would say that Finance Committee might be amenable to maybe three of those.
It is a very large increase, and I guess I'd like to understand more if they're changing the operational template, how that's going to affect it.
So the Chief was looking to have three people on some nights and every weekend. So she's been working with myself and the Finance Committee as far as some of those metrics, like does the call volume support that, that kind of thing. But some of it comes with an added cost. For any person that you add to the union, you also have to then allow for like holiday pay, for example. So it doesn't come without a cost, even though they're still technically on-call and they're only getting paid for hours they work. I mean, you can see in this column here, it's about, call it $3,300 a year for holidays per person. So like I said, if I had to venture a guess, I would say that Finance might be amenable to maybe a couple of these people being added. I don't know that they're going to go for all four.
So my headset would be, we know the operational template's changing. I mean, fires are not what drives the Fire Department anymore. It's medical emergencies. And if, we also know that when we do medical emergencies for other towns, mutual aid, that we get revenue. So if the revenue is offsetting that, I think I would say fine, if that's what the Chief needs. But if the revenue's not offsetting it and we're going up a fair amount, I guess I would like to know more about it.
That seemed to be how the Finance Committee viewed it as well.
Well, we'll let them work their way through it.
Did you have any other questions about the fire section?
The vehicle maintenance?
So this was put in here. The Chief has done a fantastic job as far as getting the vehicle, like the fleet, properly maintained. We've had, you know, in the past, like engines that the oil hadn't been changed in however long. She has a whole maintenance schedule now for all the vehicles. That includes tires and all sorts of things. We thought it was better to just have it all physically in the budget rather than her having an emergency every other thing, like, oh, there's an issue with the tires on this vehicle. There's some pretty complex systems onboard for some of those, too, even like the pumping mechanism for the fire engines and everything. So that was factored in for all of that. Police Department, do you have any questions on this section? LEED is the new acronym that used to be DARE.
The only question I have is, the 2.5% for salaries that we've been working against for cost of living, this is 3.3%?
So the Chief's contract provides for the cost of living plus $1,000.
Is that for like a stipend, or...
No, it's just how you voted. That's the language in his salary section of the contract. The Administrative Assistant one, we keep adjusting it, and I think it's a rounding thing because there's 52.2 weeks. She's only getting 2.5%.
Okay.
So we'll deal with any rounding issues. And the union members are getting 3% per the collective bargaining agreement, same as the Fire Department.
Okay.
May I add a question? For the LED, what does that stand for? Like, should I not be doing DARE for the Memorial Day program and stuff?
It's LEED now. I think it's something like law enforcement...
Against drugs.
Against drugs. Okay, thank you, Officer Smith.
Okay, I'll change, because I'll change it online.
Utilities have been a big one for us this current year. Some of the ever-source bills that we've received are absolutely staggering. Not for the Old Town House, though, with the heat pump system. So that's what these are. This big one here isn't just police station utilities. It also covers the entire phone system, our internet, the whole fiber network for all the town buildings. So that's what that is.
So when you say town fiber and Voice Over Internet Protocol, Police Department building, you're saying heat and phone together or just phone?
That, so that line there is, covers the townwide fiber, which is internet for all the town buildings. It covers the phone service for all the town buildings, and it covers heat and electricity for the Police Department.
Just the Police Department?
Just the Police Department. Then the next line is the heat and electricity for the Town House, Old Town House, I think Library maybe in there? I'm not certain.
It is?
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
And then Fire Station is the Fire Station.
That's a good jump.
Emergency Dispatch Services contract is slated to stay the same. They are looking at bringing another town on, so that might go down in upcoming years.
Been sitting there for a while.
They have, but they haven't onboarded anybody new that's resulted in any cost savings for us yet. Veterans is pretty self-explanatory. Library, the library trustees are proposing an increase in hours for the library to have it open, a minimum of 40 hours a week, and it would be the library director working those hours and facilitating that. So that salary adjustment that you see there is for an increase in hours, a substantial increase in hours. It's currently open, I believe, 26 hours a week, so it would be open a lot more. And the library director was currently surveying people to figure out like what days might make sense and hours and things like that.
So we'll expect somebody from the library to speak on that on the floor?
Correct, yes. Correct, yes. Elementary school, we got to this spot here after a lot of hard work and financial gymnastics, a lot of effort from Jason Frazier, John Wilhamsen, and the Plimpton School Committee.
So is this considered a final number?
Yes.
I assume that they'll be explaining that on the floor, too?
Yep. So that's the budget.
Okay, seven point four. Okay, I'm sure there'll be questions, but it sounds like we have answers.
For, because I have to send things to print, are you ready to take your vote on Article Four so that your recommendation can be printed?
I am.
I'm all right, as subject to finance.
Yep.
If they disagree, then we should, will we, if they disagree, will we have the opportunity to, because of your deadline?
Um, I don't know if it'll be printed in there, I have to see. It also depends on when I get everything back from Greg Corbo, but possibly. They're not going to adjust anything up, let me put it, it'll only come down a little bit.
I'm okay.
Okay, so do you just want to do, so this would be a motion, all of the recommendations on the warrants are done in the affirmative, so this is a vote to recommend the finance committee's budget?
So I'll make a motion to recommend Article Four. To see if the town will fix the compensation of elected official offices and to see what sum of money the town will raise in appropriate.
All right, so now I think we can take all of these in bulk for your recommendation, but unless one of you differs on something, and if it's not unanimous, then we'll vote those separate.
There's going to be a few that we might, but some of these are just housekeeping, like one and two.
Right, so those, those are what we see every year. Article Three is the wage scale.
And this is by the Wage and Personnel Committee, right?
Um, they're only advisory now, but I send it to them. It just went up by the cost of living.
Okay, so they haven't commented, though?
No. No, and we did have to adjust for the library director in the event that the increase in library hours gets approved. Everything else was just the two and a half. You already looked at Article Four. Article Five is the standard CPC housekeeping article. Article Six is, this is for the CPC project.
Open space.
Yeah. Article Seven, this is another CPC project. This is the, this is the library one for the recreation area out back.
I might just make a quick comment about this one. The verbiage in the first half of that article is really, really dense. What it's intended in this article and also in article in special town meeting is to make clear that land upon which CPA funds are used should be dedicated to that purpose, to recreation. When I tried to draft that, I think I had it down to two sentences. When town council got a hold of it, it did become very, very dense. But all those words ultimately mean that we, we as a town are dedicating the land upon which the library project will be done to recreational uses.
But the sixty-five thousand is coming from the CPC?
It is, it is indeed.
Not a reason to vote.
Correct.
Article Eight is for our annual audit. Article Nine are the lease payments. Fortunately, we were able to identify other sources, and there was also a state budget earmark, so some of the leases that you would normally see in here, fortunately, we don't have to fund those from capital this year.
But these two will come from?
Yep. Article Ten is simply repurposing funds that were already voted for the fire department. It's to have a grant match available for portable radios and for some hoses and fire equipment. And these funds, like I said, were already appropriated, so they're already on the books. It's simply repurposing them. Ten thousand, this is our customary sort of safety deposit to the buildings and maintenance article.
And this is coming from?
Uh, free cash. Article Twelve, this is to replenish the information technology and equipment article. Our townwide fiber network is run through initially the server system at the police department. One of those servers failed about a year, year and a half ago, so we've been running on one with a security patch installed, and it's not compliant any longer as well with some of what they're doing at regional dispatch. So this will address those. It'll also address some security issues. And, and that, so that's.
Who's coordinating that within the police department?
Sergeant Nete Valente. Article Thirteen is the dead exclusion for the fire station.
Yes, now. I'm on the committee, so I feel comfortable saying yes, please, but just as a little background, the bids are supposed to be in, I believe, tomorrow, April fifteenth. There are two meetings set up that will be for residents to come. We've already had one, which was last Saturday. The next two will be evening meetings here in this room, the twenty-fourth on a Thursday and the thirtieth on a Wednesday evening. And at that time, we expect we'll be able to tell the residents exactly what this will cost, and we're going to have a meeting tomorrow where finance.
The finance team, including finance committee, a member or two, will be there.
To go through, how, how do we break down the payment schedule? What will come out of capital? And what will end up being in a dead exclusion? So that's where we are with this article. So right now, we don't, we don't have a firm number, but we expect to, hopefully tomorrow. So I'm playing with a few.
Article Fourteen is for road construction, kind of the standard one from the highway department. Fifteen authorizes us to utilize Chapter Ninety funds. Sixteen is for bylaw codification. Seventeen is for the interim valuation for the assessors' office. Eighteen is the select board versus Board of Selectmen.
So we might want to stop there and just approve through Article Seventeen?
Let's do through Seventeen, that's a good idea.
So I would make a motion that we approve Articles Three, one through Seventeen, excluding Article Four, which was already approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, eighteen is the name change, do you want to vote that separately?
I think so.
Okay.
Yes, I'm the one who is actively proposing it, so I feel kind of comfortable with it, but I don't know.
I, I, I think I understand well the rationale to do it, I respect the motivation to do it. I'm going to vote against this one. And there are reasons why that I can discuss now or certainly I'm telling me.
Yeah, we'll have that opportunity on the panel before.
Okay.
I don't see it being a big thing in case we have, you know, if there's no big change in the money in it, as long as the town gets the vote for it, it's really the town's decision, as I've stated before, not ours, so that's where I stand on it. So if I, if it moves it forward to a vote by the town, I have no problem with it going forward with the vote.
So that'll be a two to one.
Nineteen is.
Is that like a motion, did John just make a motion for that, like a two to one or?
Yeah, I mean, he, yours was motion, did you?
I think I second the motion.
But then voted against, okay. All right, nineteen is for the MBTA required zoning. It's establishing a residential development overlay district. It's on an area of Route one oh six, and when this goes to print, all of the information, including the map and everything, will be available at the town clerk's office, and the planning board will be holding a public hearing on this. So it's really the planning board recommendation that's what's more significant for town meeting for legal purposes. The only thing I would say about this, I know that some people aren't in favor of it simply because of the way that the state is doing it, handling it. The only thing I would point out is that it's a mandate to zone, not a mandate to build. All this is going to do is for some of the non-residential properties along a certain stretch of one oh six, if those property owners ever went to sell or do something different, they'd have another option, they could create housing. Whether or not that's practical or would ever happen, I don't really know, but it's just simply giving another option. And we recently just were awarded a grant from the state, and now they're starting to put right in these grants that if you're not in compliance with the MBTA zoning, you forfeit the funds. So that's all I would point out.
So I have, yes, two comments. One is, quite a while ago, maybe back ten years, we, the Board of Selectmen didn't take a position on planning board articles. And I don't know if we've been doing this, I guess I just haven't paid attention in terms of recommending. I don't have a problem with recommending, because I know where I'm going to come down and where I'm going to speak to. I guess my question would be, should we be taking a position on this? Probably it makes so, we should, because we are the executive, so-called, officers of the town. My position is going to be, I think it's a terrible position that the state has put us in, because Plimpton, quite frankly, with its three thousand people, not even that, is not where this was being directed to. But I do think it would be foolish of us to walk away from this and lose the grants. We have, we've received over two million dollars in grants over the last two and a half years. And I don't think it would, I think pragmatically, we should vote for this, it doesn't mean that it's going to be built. The area that the planning board has put in place, I think, makes a lot of sense. The one oh six area where the auto body and other, and I would call it the chunky idea spoken, I'm not sure. So I think it makes sense pragmatically to say, yes, let's do this, and to make sure that we get grants. I know our state representative has said Plimpton is the most aggressive town that she works with in terms of going after grants. And I think we want to continue that, I think we owe it to the townspeople. So that's where I am.
I agree, I mean, I think we should make a recommendation on this one way or the other. The legislation, I think, is abysmally poorly thought through, unfunded mandate, seeing the towns all as the same, and I hate this approach, there are much more creative approaches to doing housing. All that being said, we're a little tiny town, this is a battle, I don't think we should be taking up, and totally agree, we particularly, with such a small professional staff, need to take advantage of grants, with great reluctance, but with certainty that we should be voting for this, so I'm in favor of this article.
As am I. Okay, so, did we, are we voting just?
Yeah, just, yeah, you can do that.
Then I would make a motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend to town meeting the approval of Article?
Nineteen.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Article Twenty is regarding accessory dwelling units or ADUs. Same thing, planning board will be holding a public hearing. This simply takes our pre-existing ADU section of the bylaw and makes it into compliance with what the state voted.
Does it make perfect sense?
Total sense, great project, we were ahead of the game long before the state, and they're catching up with us finally.
And kudos to the bylaw review committee for sharpening that through. I would make a motion that we approve Article Twenty.
Yes.
As written.
Second.
Anybody in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then Article Twenty-one is housekeeping for the.
Right. So now we're on to special town meeting. So Article One is regarding the prudent investment rule. That was the item that Christine Kelly came in and presented to the board a short while back, and I am going to ask if she can have the handout available for this at town meeting.
I think it's going to be confusing the way it's written.
Right. Article Two is the CPC article for the Recreation Commission.
Same story on this, the verbiage at the beginning is the poetry of town council, but again restricting, once CPA funds are used on land, that that land use be dedicated to that kind of, to the recreational use.
And then Article Three is.
Can I just ask a question on that, though? Does that mean that if something came up with housing, that it would exclude?
Yeah, it would.
So how do we want to do that?
So that we can use CPA funds to make the improvements as described in this application.
But you can do that anyways, right?
New CPA funds? No, I, what we've come to learn is particularly for recreational use, land upon which CPA funds are used must be dedicated to recreational use. And really, what this is going to do is protect the ball fields in perpetuity to be a recreational use. It does limit our flexibility, it leaves open the possibility of additional funds and improvement along the way. It is, it is not a small thing.
I was just concerned about, what if something historical came up?
And, you know, and that's the trade-off, to have these funds available, we have to make that restriction.
Article Three is to replenish the Special Education Reserve Fund. And then. And then we just kept a placeholder on here, just in case the school committee needs anything else last minute.
Okay. I'm fine with...
So that's a motion?
So is that a motion for one through three?
I'll make a motion that we approve Articles 1 through 3 as written in the Plinton Special Town Meeting one. Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Right. Okay.
Yes.
That's a pretty concise...
Those are probably a day or two's work, wasn't it?
Pretty concise, uh, one, actually.
It is. It is. We were able to fund some things through some other sources and...
I think it is actually the most condensed, at least in the last 20 years.
Okay. So we've done the review and recommendations for town meeting articles. Warrants paid. Free. Town administrator updates. Carlos Martin.
So we've been working, obviously, on the budget and the warrants. I have a few different items. So we had to issue a public health advisory for manganese in our water supply, and the notice had to be provided to the Board of Health. Our water operator, Sarian, notified DEP, and it had to be posted near all of the sinks in all of the buildings. As part of that, Sarian had inquired about the status of the new public water supply project and where we were at with the wells because they haven't really heard anything. I did reach out to the Board of Health, and they had some concerns. It doesn't sound like they've been brought up to speed yet really at all on the status of that project. And there are certain requirements that the well driller has to follow.
That doesn't sound right because we have a consultant that has been told to make sure that the board has to be on board.
I think, so I'll just run through this really briefly, and then you might want to have us reach out to the consultant and...
Well, I think we should reach out through John Wilhamsen, the chair of the committee.
Yes. So some of the things that were pointed out, there's various references to CMRs, Code of Mass Regulations. So per the CMR pertaining to well drillers, a well completion report for the original drilling of the three wells was not submitted to the Board of Health within 30 days. Since there's been no permit requested, Board of Health can't really ascertain the date in which the wells were actually drilled, but they're aware that it was over 30 days ago. Then per the same regulation, the modification of well number three was never submitted to Board of Health. And then Board of Health has its own well regulations that go back as far as 1989, and they noted that no permit applications were received for the three original wells and no permit application for the modification of well number three. It's supposed to be the well driller, like the individual or business itself, that is required to apply. So I would suggest that maybe we reach out to John Wilhamsen and find out if he can get in touch with the driller and...
Absolutely, but, you know, and Dan Pallada. He's the one who's shepherding this through, but I know we met with him, whether, a consultant twice.
Right. Right.
And watching instructions were very quick.
Right. So...
Make sure the Board of Health is on board.
Okay. So there's that, and Sarian wasn't aware either, but they did...
I don't understand that.
Dan Pallada did send a very brief update to Sarian and said he thought that the new wells would be done maybe by September 30th. But we just want to make sure that Board of Health, that everybody's kind of coming along in the process.
Just to be clear, what's the next step or steps here?
I can reach out to the Town Properties Committee via the chair and bring this to their attention and say, hey, can you please check in?
And presumably from there to Dan and the well company?
I can't remember Bill's last name, who was that well consultant? But it will go from John Wilhamsen. He will make sure that Dan and the well consultant are there. And we will make sure it's on our meeting when the meeting's done.
Okay.
Good.
We received a notification from Bill Hayes. He is moving forward with removing a dead tree and getting rid of some woody debris at the old townhouse. And he has Barnes Tree. They're going to be taking care of that, just to clean that up. We received a letter from the Edwards family on Upland Road, reaching out to the chief of police and the selectman's administrative assistant, thanking Lieutenant Daniel Hoffman and the officers for their response to a call there last week. This we should probably vote, just so that we have it for our records. This is the customary annual vote for Old Colony Elder Services. And we just wanted to reaffirm the vote that Dorothy Martel will continue to serve as the representative for next fiscal year.
We actually haven't had our board meeting until tomorrow.
Okay.
Scheduled for tomorrow, and we didn't confirm with Dottie that...
Okay, so you want to, we'll hold this then. Okay.
Sorry, both of you.
Hold. And then we have three grants that were just recently awarded. We received a community compact grant for $73,200. That was applied for largely by Chief All and Sergeant Valente. And the part of the grant that we were awarded is actually the part that's not for them. It's for us over here. It's for our internal permitting software. So that was interesting. We appreciate their efforts in getting us that grant.
That's also the one that...
Yes.
The MBTA...
The MBTA won't, if we're not in compliance, we're not allowed to take those funds. And I will say that this internal permitting software, I surveyed all the town departments as far as whether they thought they'd utilize this, and even gauging their interest as far as website capabilities versus the internal permitting software. And the permitting software won out, like with everybody. So it is something that I think would really be utilized, so I hope that we're able to take advantage of that. It would make it so that, just for, say, for example, if somebody applied, let's say for a solar project, all of the relevant town departments would have access, and then they could make sure that, like, different plans weren't filed with conservation than maybe with the planning board, or that the electrical inspector was looking at the same plan set as the fire department, and that fire and police got to look at the same plan sets as far as, like, entering and exiting the site, like, things like that. So it just, everyone would have the same information. And then we also received word that the fire department was awarded two grants. One was a safe and senior safe grant for $3,520, and that's for public safety education for older adults. So I have no doubt that they'll come up with a great program.
We're all for it. That's for Colleen.
And then another, a fire equipment grant for $1,875.
Was there a quote of that at all?
$1,875.
And the first one was? It's great that the departments are really pushing forward to get these grants. It's important.
And that's all I have.
Any...
I didn't know you needed me here for, are you appointing for private?
You never sent me his name.
Sorry.
We can do it at the, we'll do it at the next meeting. I'll make a little note on here for Dottie.
Congratulations.
His name is Dennis Drews. D R O.
Yeah, my neighbor. Yeah, great.
But he was hired to drive.
Great.
Senior A... Okay, I put this in here. That's okay.
Thank you, Colleen. That's great. I'm glad to see that.
He's going to start the training though, right?
Yes, he was going to start one tomorrow.
Great.
But the class was actually full, but he has two others that are online that he can do.
Perfect.
So, and I did have a conversation with the state. You should not be driving anyone in the wheelchair, with a wheelchair until he gets that class. That's not a big deal. I haven't had anybody calling with a wheelchair needing to ride, so...
Is that in person yesterday, or does he do it online?
That one is in person.
Okay, and that's Pembroke, do I remember?
That was in Hanover.
Hanover, okay.
They're all over the state.
Yeah, good.
It could be that if we get a couple people who are, it's just like, you know, I could take the class, maybe one of the fire department members would want to take the class because Steve Lyons drives a van for the fire trips.
Sure. Makes great sense.
He's easily got it here, but we'll, the state's aware that we are working toward it and we're good, so.
Going to put some mileage on the man.
Yes.
Great.
2,600 of that.
Thank you, Colleen.
I did have a question. Had you voted Michael Mattern, the Board of Registrous, in your last meeting?
Didn't we? Sounds familiar.
No, I don't feel like we did. We did Cotter...
And Rustley.
And Wesley. We'll have to do that at the next one. I'll pass this down, and I put Dennis on here too.
And Brian Kling?
He's also.
Okay.
Did you do an updated slip? Perfect.
Where I got the... Yes. So what admin?
Want to rave?
Oh, rave. So a couple, Bill August got us through the negotiating process with Big Comcast. Much more importantly, I think my rave is for Liz. The budget process keeps evolving, and it is evolving, I think, to something increasingly efficient and transparent and wise. So, well done.
Yeah, I think we've come a long ways from, in seven years. You're the leader of that, so thank you. I'm also going to rave about the daffodils that are on Route 106. Every year, that's the one thing that really starts, it says, springs here in the Perkya. And people really come from a long ways to see that, but it's worth it. It just goes too fast. So unless there's any other business, I will make a motion that we end the Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, April 14, 2025.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.